Election Day, June 7th will determine the political, economic, and social future of our city and region in many ways. However, no residents will be any more impacted than those of the Long Beach City Council's Second District. As a resident of the Second District myself, I can attest to the diverse mix of cultures, quaint businesses, and major industry leaders we appreciate. There are rental units, beautiful historic homes, high-rise condos, and homeless living on the streets. One of the most beautiful and dynamic areas of our city. Clearly, a district that will have a great deal of attention and influence with pending changes at the Queen Mary, downtown, and throughout the district. I think we all would agree that the Second District will need a strong visionary leader that is willing to work with colleagues on the council as well as those in the community to achieve a greater good. They will need to be able to stand up for all residents in Long Beach, not just those with special interests and influence. Rich or poor, small businesses or major industry, aspiring youth or respected elders, all must have a voice in the Second District if it is to flourish like we know it can. The two election runoff candidates for District 2 who are with us tonight feel that they are qualified and ready to take this seat on the City Council. We hope that this edition of Election Perspectives will help you get to know the candidates better. If you're watching this broadcast live, we are taking questions from the public during the second half of our show. Post your questions on the Facebook event page at bit.ly/askdistrict2. Each candidate will have a chance to answer, and we will select as many questions as time allows. Thank you for joining us on our Election Perspectives show. Welcome back. I'm Derek J. Simpson, Executive Director for the Long Beach Community Action Partnership. I'm very proud to share with you the perspectives of the two candidates for Council District 2 in the city elections on June 7th. With me, I'd like to welcome both Eric Gray and Janine Pierce as the two candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very pleased to have you guys here with us. And as I was mentioning right before we went live, I want to first give everyone viewing an opportunity to get to know the candidates because I heard once when I was in Washington, DC, that when politicians looked at each other, they looked at another politician as having bad policy. But today, they look at each other as being a bad person. And because they can't get past that, many things are stuck in terms of policy that we would hope would get passed. So let's start with you, Eric. How would you describe Eric to those who are watching that want to know, who is the man that's running for this district?
Sure. Well, first off, thank you for having us here today. I think it's really important that the citizens of Long Beach get to see who their next potential city council member is. And congratulations on the new space here at PatNet. I think it's tremendous. The work you're doing is incredible for the community. My name is Eric Gray, and I think people see me as a community leader, visionary, someone that's been deeply involved with the downtown community as well as neighborhoods outside of downtown as well. I'm someone who fosters the arts and music and makes sure that priorities set to help out our small businesses. I'm someone who wants to see a greater Long Beach. I think we are a great city already. We have a downtown skyline, historic neighborhoods, small and evolving business quarters, and the waterfront. And I think we have so much potential here in the city of Long Beach. And I believe that, I think I'm sort of the visionary that's here to bring the city of Long Beach forward in the right direction by helping everyone here in the city of Long Beach.
And Janine, I know that you and I have crossed paths in terms of the work that we've done in the community.
Yeah.
But for those who have heard a lot about you politically speaking, what about you as that person who lives in our community?
Yeah, who I am as a person, I mean, I'm a mother, I'm a wife, I'm a volunteer, I'm a city commissioner, a community organizer. I'm somebody that came from poverty, that experienced a lot of struggle growing up. And I'm somebody that was able to overcome that struggle over a long period of time. So I've had to be pragmatic in my life. I moved out of my mom's house at 16. I've worked every day since. I've paid rent every day since. And that really shaped who I am today, my values, what I stand up for, the fact that I know that everybody has to be at the table, and that you really have to put yourself in somebody else's shoes when you start thinking about decisions that you're going to make. And so while I might not be a business owner, I have to make sure that I see things through the lens of our business community. What do they need to thrive? How would they see a policy coming forward? And more than just that, having them at the table. You know, my experience in Long Beach has been as a community organizer. So I started at Cal State Long Beach organizing students on campus. And through there, I became an intern at LANE, a nonprofit. And it's been really amazing, the skill set that I've been able to gain from working with them. And I want to thank you so much for always being a great partner. We've had so many community meetings at CAP back when it was the other location. And it was wonderful to bring people together that typically don't work together. And so I want to continue to bring that value to the Second District in making sure that everybody has a voice and making sure that we're building a community that works for everybody, from people living on 10th Street in, you know, those apartments to people on Ocean Boulevard.
Now, to both of you, with that said, that's what you were doing, but why now should you be the next person representing us on the City Council? Start with you, Eric. Why would you be the best candidate in that regard?
Sure. Well, I think we're in a very interesting time here in the city of Long Beach. Our downtown is starting to thrive. We have new developments happening. We have a business scene that's sort of growing. We have an arts and music scene that's growing. And we have our historic neighborhoods that are thriving with things like the Mills Act. And we have homeowners that are really taking care of their property. We have many rental units across the Second District. And you have rising rent prices as well, so we have to be cognizant of that. I'm someone that can sort of connect the different pieces within the city of Long Beach. My neighborhood experience, helping to shape policy, is at the forefront of my thinking going forward. I can start from day one at City Council. I have a vision to connect our entire district from downtown through the Broadway Quarter, through 4th Street Retro Row, all the way back to Alameda's, to the 7th Street Quarter, to the 10th Street Quarter, and also helping people along the way, helping people have more job opportunities, helping people with the things they need to fix, like parking and quality of life issues. I believe that, I love the city of Long Beach, and I believe that I'm in tune with the neighborhoods, I'm in tune with the people, and I'm always looking for win-win solutions here in the city of Long Beach. And I want to bring that ideals forward to help the city of Long Beach move forward in the right direction.
Janine, what would you say to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, Eric's right in the fact that we are at a cross point in our city's history. We are at a place where we have new development coming on. We have people looking at Long Beach, trying to invest in our city. And so, one, I would say, why should I be the representative? One is my experience. I have experience in working with neighborhood associations, with working with my neighbors, but I also have experience in getting things done in City Hall, which is not always easy. I've been at the forefront of helping to pass five different policies in the city, from language access to local hire to minimum wage, trying to make sure that we bring people together to do that. And that means working with City Council, means working with their staff, with city manager, city attorney, and understanding how we can get those things done quickly. But at the forefront is my community organizing experience. And so beyond any policy that I want to see done in the city, it's making sure that we are governing with transparency, with accountability, and with integrity. And that means that number one, our residents have to be at the table, that it doesn't mean having an agenda item come up at City Council and residents not knowing how to get involved or where they plug in. And so my commitment is to make sure that we're not knocking on doors only during election year, but that we're knocking on doors as much as we can, as frequently as possible, to get people to the table, to get their voice heard, and to make sure that we're governing from the bottom up.
Let me ask you, I was going to ask this in the second half, but you've mentioned several times your community organizing. A question that was sent in from someone on our social media was, how do you separate what you were doing from an organizing representative perspective to now being on the council? How do you address that person's question?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the questions come up a couple of times. I'm not sure the, you know, I think the first thing is community organizing is a value, and it's not just an action. And the value is having people at the table and empowering people to find their voice. And so no matter if that's about parking, if that's about trees, if that's about the minimum wage, it's making sure that people in the business community have a voice at the table. And so using that value is really important to me. How do I separate myself out from my work at LANE? LANE is a nonprofit that continues to try to work with labor, with community, and with businesses. Will we always agree when a policy comes up on that item? Not likely, you know, with the path to 15. I've always said I supported a path to 15, but not 15 right away, which was a different stance from my organization. And so I feel very confident that I can, you know, think independently, but make sure I have all the resources, all the facts, all the data, but that I have the people that are going to be impacted at the table first before anything else.
Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Let's talk about the platforms. Eric, if we were to speak specifically to, what are the main points of your platform? You've mentioned several different things, but is there any particular top priorities that you would like people to really like hone in on to say, this is what I'm really about when you hear my platform?
Sure. I think, well, quality of life is definitely an extremely important part of the platform, from finding parking solutions. The Second District has probably the most parking-packed neighborhoods in the entire city.
I can attest to that.
And, you know, we need a multi-pronged approach to fix parking, and so I'm going to work with our city government to ensure that we have more parking. For instance, I think we need to take somebody from our planning department and put them into a full-time position as a parking planner to identify parking spaces across the entire city. I do think we can partner with local developers to find parking garage opportunities in areas that really need it, such as the business quarters, whether it be the Broadway Quarter or by the East Village. I think we need to do hash marks to delineate parking. Quality of life to me is what residents are most interested in. I think most residents, when they come home from work, they want to, A, have a place to live, B, find parking spaces, and have nice places to walk to, such as restaurants and stores and so forth. So quality of life coupled with economic development. I think it's really important to support our local economy, and I think we need to really help out our businesses here in the city of Long Beach to invest in our business quarters, such as the Retro Row Quarter, or Broadway, or downtown, what have you. So those are definitely my priorities, as well as public safety. We have a spike in property crime across the city of Long Beach. We have initiatives like Prop 47 that are causing really negative actions across the city. And I think it's really important that we bolster our police and fire resources and also have community policing programs, police officers on bicycles and walking the beat. I think we have issues with, we have more and more residents being built, and I think we do need to further staff our fire department as well. So public safety is a big core issue for me as well.
Can I ask you, we have just a minute or so before we go to break, but you mentioned Prop 47. Now, we're an agency that actually is funded to do outreach to help people engage. And you mentioned that Prop 47 may be a contributor to the spike in crime. What is that based on, so that people understand? Because I haven't heard that.
Absolutely. I think in general, Prop 47 was very well-intended. I think it was to reduce the amount of incarceration in our jails. And certainly, it's very fair to state that the state has not given the city funds for drug rehabilitation programs. And I love the work that you're doing to help people clean up their records.
Right.
I will say that the part of Prop 47 that I have issues with is that it allows someone to basically steal up to $950 worth of property, and it'd only be classified as a misdemeanor. And they can do it again the next day. And I, I've been knocking on doors in the Second District since August. And in many of our neighborhoods, we are seeing property crime issues happen. And I want to, I want to see Prop 47 modified from that portion of it.
Okay, we're going to hold that thought. I'll give you a chance to also answer if you would like. We're going to take a short break, but before we do, I'd like to remind our viewers who are watching this broadcast live to please post your questions on the Facebook event page at bit.ly/askdistrict2. We will be selecting your questions during the second half of our show and giving the candidates a chance to respond. Stay tuned for more of Election Perspectives.
It's very pet-friendly. Everybody has a dog in Long Beach. It's Dog City.
Well, there's everything to do here. You've got the Pike, you've got Queen Mary, you've got the beaches, you've got paddle boarding, surfing. You go a half a mile that way, you've got surfing, you've got downtown.
I just think it's the most incredible, most beautiful, most unique city, which has so much to offer. So I love it here, and I'll never leave.
Welcome back to Election Perspectives. I'm Derek J. Simpson, and we are speaking with Eric Gray and Janine Pierce, the two candidates running for City Council District 2. If you are watching this show live on the air, we encourage you to post your questions for the candidates at bit.ly/askdistrict2. We'll be selecting questions posted to our Facebook event page during the second half of our show. Now, before we went to break, Eric was answering a question that I posed about his position on Prop 47. And I do that because as an agency, we're funded to do outreach. And you wanted to make a comment on that as well before we move on to our next question.
Thank you, Derek. I'll just make a brief comment. I mean, I, this issue continues to come up, and first and foremost, I would say that I was a part of the community team that brought together to try to pass Prop 47 in Long Beach. I'm really proud of that work. There was two reports done last week that said that in fact, an uptick in crime is not a result of Prop 47. And when you look nationally at crime rates, nationally, they are going up. And so there's not a direct link. I think what we need to focus on is not changing Prop 47, but again, the promise of support for nonprofits, for cities, to ensure that recidivism rates don't go up, that we're actually helping people get out of poverty, find access to jobs, getting them out of the situation they're in, is the number one priority that we as a council can do, that nonprofits can do. That's where we need to spend our energy in supporting this community. A lot of the people and the crimes that have happened are crimes of poverty, unfortunately. And I've had my home broken into, and so I know the impact of poverty. But we need to focus on how do we help this community not go back in instead of criminalizing again.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
When I spoke to the police department recently, they had told me that the spike in property crime had to do with drugs. So of course, we support drug rehabilitation programs. But I just, and I also want to say that in the state legislature, they are passing a bill currently to basically increase the felony charge if a person steals a gun that's worth less than $950. So the state legislature is already catching.
There are some changes.
They're starting to make changes already. And I have to say that, I'm going to state again that we have many property owners in the Second District who are homes are getting broken into. And I support modifying Prop 47 to ensure that people's homes aren't being broken into because of this. And I really think we need to look at future empirical evidence as it keeps on going on so that we can make the right decisions. I don't think defending it just because, you know, you worked on its way to go. I think true leadership is looking back at what's been in the past and looking to modify that if it's not going the right way. I think it's important to be flexible, and that's the leadership that I'm going to bring here to the city.
Okay, I want to, I was reading different information, trying to get as broad a scope as I could for this particular program. And I read in the Press Telegram that says that the Second District is one of the most dynamic in the city. I mentioned that earlier. But it says, however, it also has concerns with homelessness, poverty, and lack of affordable housing. And the question was, how will we address that? And I know with all the new high rises going up and everything in the downtown area, that's great, but some would say that that's also moving out the population that was there originally. So to the question of homelessness and poverty, given that we are a poverty-fighting agency, clearly, that's one of our concerns. I'll start with you, Janine, and give you the last word on this as well.
Well, and so two things real quick. I just wanted to respond. I, of course, am somebody that wants to be flexible and make sure that we're addressing things as they move forward. I do believe that when we're governing, we cannot just govern for the, how do we address the problem right in front of us, but how do we address the causes of what's happening? How do we address the root causes of crime? And that's why, you know, poverty-reducing programs are so important, organizations like yourself are so important. And so that's why I focus on that end, just to go back to Prop 47. I also don't know that I answered the question that was asked of Eric, which was his priorities. Did you want me to answer that one?
Let's start with a priority, to be fair, and then let's move into this question. Because I want to get as many of these questions in as we can. So go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely. I will just do priority really quickly. I mean, I think number one priority for District 2 for all the residents is definitely parking, which is why it's going to be the very first thing that after June 7th, I meet with the city manager, with all those folks in the city that really have a say in that. So working on that. And number two is transparency and access in local government. And so again, bringing in that model of community organizing to the city to make sure that we're talking about the environment, that we're talking about parking, that we're talking about economic development, and what's best for residents. So.
Okay. And to the issue of homelessness and poverty in the Second District.
Definitely. I mean, our district has the two ZIP codes, one with the highest life expectancy, one with the lowest life expectancy, with a difference of seven years. That has been the world that I have been working and organizing in in the last nine years, is trying to address poverty. And so having more rich policies and programs to ensure that we're getting veterans and youth into local jobs as soon as possible, working to partner with organizations like yourself to ensure that we're creating programs and that we're working with businesses, new businesses and old businesses in the city, to get access to those jobs is really important. For homelessness, it is a regional, it's not just a regional issue, it is a national issue. And so it's important for cities, one, to recognize that there's a problem. And I think that we still have some leadership in the city that says, eh, it's a problem, but there's nothing we can really do about it. We have to step up and as a city, say that there's a moment of crisis. Whether or not poverty's or homelessness is reducing, it's still a major issue. And so working with the county, working with the state, working with the federal levels, but working with our fire department as well, they want to step up and make change. Seventy percent of the calls in the district for our fire department goes to dealing with somebody in the homeless community. And so going out and bringing all those resources just to turn around and go back without addressing their issue is really a challenge. And so how do we spend our resources in supporting our homeless community, sending out social service workers, making sure that we're investing in that is really important. And I think it's great that our fire department wants to change that system, too. It's not about keeping the jobs for them, it's about how do we make sure that we're helping those most impacted in our district.
Eric. Well, I agree that homelessness and poverty is a big issue here in the city of Long Beach. And so in 2015, I chaired the Downtown Residential Council Homeless Task Force, and we met monthly on this issue. And, you know, it started off a little bit rocky. We had people who lived across from Lincoln Park that were part of the task force. And, but what we did was we brought in different service providers to talk about homelessness. We brought in our quality-of-life officers, the Long Beach Rescue Mission, and MHA. And my personal stance on homelessness is that we have to house people who are experiencing homelessness. I support the housing-first model. And I certainly feel that Long Beach and San Pedro and downtown LA are doing a lot for homelessness, and we should do more. I also believe we need to partner with Sacramento and LA County to ensure that all cities in California are housing their homelessness. Because we have a lot of people out there in the streets, on the beaches, in the parks, in the neighborhoods, that are mentally ill, and they need our help. Are we going to leave them out there in the streets? Are we going to put them in mental institutions? We don't really have them anymore. Or are we going to house them with wraparound services? So I advocate for housing our homeless population with wraparound services, but I also want to take a balanced approach and make sure that all cities in California are doing so as well. In regards to poverty, I think the best way to help people in poverty is workforce development programs and economic development. And as a council member, I will sit down with our Economic Development Department to talk about how we can bring in companies to the city of Long Beach and partner with City College, partner with our workforce development programs to get people jobs and get people career paths.
You both have powerful backers, both on the City Council and in the region. The question to you both is, and let's stay with you, Eric, since you were just speaking, who are some of those backers and why do you think that they're supporting you?
Sure. I have former Mayor Bob Foster, Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell. I have Council Member Lena Gonzalez from the First District, and Council Member Susie Price from the Third District. Those are the two districts that are part, that border the Second District. I believe Lena Gonzalez is backing me because we worked in the community together. We work with the Historic Pine Avenue Business Association and the Downtown Residential Council. We work to make Pine Avenue a better place. I think Susie Price has backed me because of our, we have similarities in certain, in certain issues we agree upon. We're definitely, I'm progressive, but I'm also business-friendly. And I think Bob Foster has backed me because I'm fiscally responsible. So, and we have Assembly Member Patrick O'Donnell, who's been a great backer, and he's been an incredible supporter throughout the entire election.
Janine.
Yeah, I'm really proud of all the support that I've been able to get on this campaign. And I think one support that I'm extremely proud of is Congress Member Alan Lowenthal. He used to represent the district, he knows the district, and he's a progressive that's been balanced, and that community members were really proud of him coming from the community and coming up. And I think one of the reasons that he's supporting me is because of that grassroots background and because of our values, and because I'm able to get things done. Council Member Roberto Yaranga, Council Member Rex Richardson, Assembly Member Mike Gibson, we've got a lot of great support. We also have the endorsement and support of Staying Alive, which is a group that's against, you know, what's the word? Putting to sleep animals in our shelters. I also have the support of a lot of labor background. I have a lot of support of nonprofit leaders. I have 130 small businesses that have endorsed my campaign. So I am a candidate that has business support, elected support, and grassroots support, and I'm really proud of all that. And they all know that we're all going to sit at the table together to get things done.
You both mentioned business, and you just, Eric, before you were finished, talked about your fiscal policy. I want to ask you, before we go to this next break, real quickly, if those watching want to know, how are you going to be fiscally responsible as our next city council person? What should we expect from Janine?
Yeah, I mean, I think fiscal responsibility means making sure that we have transparency in our budget. I want to bring our budget to our residents as quickly as possible. Sometimes we have a study session on a budget that we hear about. We have an hour conversation about it with staff, and then it goes away. And so number one is making sure that we have some participatory budgeting, but also that we make the conversation as long as possible so that we can ensure that residents have a say, making sure that our contracts are balanced as well, and that we're not spending too much where we don't need to. And I want to ensure that as much as we can, that when we're contracting with companies, that we're doing that with local companies as well, making sure that those are based in Long Beach if they exist here, is really important. But again, transparency, I think, is the most important thing.
Okay. We're about to go to break, but I want you to take us there.
Sure. Well, I want us to live within our means, and I actually want to join the Budget Oversight Committee to look at our budget and look for fiscal efficiencies within city departments. As a business owner, I understand how to balance a budget. I truly understand, you know, business and so forth. So I think it's really important that we look at the budget, and we make sure that we cut out any fat that's in, within the budget. Also, I want to make, look at creative solutions to enhancing our district. I've worked to, you know, repaint over 200 parking meters in downtown. This was aging infrastructure that hadn't been touched for years. It would have been a lot more expensive to do it through public works, but we did it for a very low cost. It was about $35 for a two-meter head and one meter, $25 for a one-meter head. So in general, I want to look at creative solutions to enhancing our district, but living within our means, and I want to join the Budget Oversight Committee.
Great. If you're watching this broadcast live, remember to post your questions for the City Council Second District 2 candidates on our Facebook event page at bit.ly/askdistrict2. We're going to take another break, and when we come back, we will be selecting your questions. Stay tuned for more Election Perspectives.
Each year, 7.5 million students nationwide miss nearly a month of school due to excused and unexcused absences. In the Long Beach Unified School District, 10% of students, including almost 11% of kindergarteners, are chronically absent. The All In Attendants Campaign is a long-term, city-wide approach to encourage students to attend school every second of every period, every day. With the help of parents, teachers, and the community at large, we can turn attendance around. Are you all in?
Hello, I'm Barry Kogurt with the Jazz Angels. We've created an environment where seasoned jazz professionals and young students perform side by side. Our students range in age from 10 to 19 and come from a wide variety of backgrounds and schools. The jazz bands are organized by skill level rather than age. If you want to have a positive impact on our youth, get involved with the Jazz Angel team or make a tax-deductible donation. Please visit www.jazzangel.org or call 562-981-8410. Thank you.
Are you tired of the run-of-the-mill duties at your internship? Getting coffee, making copies, getting prescriptions for people you don't even know? Well, not at PatNet. We're making things happen. We're getting footage. We're making PSAs. We're getting interviews with people you're gonna know.
But I don't know how to do these things.
No problem. We have workshops, equipment, hardware, software, underwear, all for you to learn and absorb. Check us out at padnet.tv for more information.
Welcome back to the Election Perspectives. I'm Derek J. Simpson, and I'm here with Eric Gray and Janine Pierce, the two candidates running for a city council District Two. For those of you who are watching this broadcast live, thank you for posting your questions for the candidates. There is still time to post your questions on the Facebook event page at bit.ly/askdistrict2. We will select as many of your questions as time allows, and I have quite a few here. So, let's start real quickly, we're going to try to jump through these. This first one is about, from Renee Tanner. Please articulate your understanding of a percent for arts program that would catalyze public art funding in Long Beach, and what role you will take in securing this important legislation during your term. Real quickly, Janine, what would you say?
Well, I understand that there's supposed to be 1% for new development, but that there's still a lot of work to be done to make sure that it's 1% of the entire project. And right now, I'm not sure that that's the case. I want to also make sure that when we talk about the 1%, that we're working very closely with our Arts Council and our new Arts Council Director. And I would like to ensure that we have local artists doing these projects. And 1% helped build out our Arts District, we definitely need it back, and we need to make sure it's as rich as it can be.
Great. Eric?
Well, I 100% support the 1% for the arts. And as I understand it, 1% is on new development. And I certainly also believe that local artists, of course, should be working on these projects. I think it's important that we get a task force created on how to disseminate the 1% for the arts, because we have different part of the arts. We have visual arts, we have music, we have arts education, and I think we need to bring everyone at the table, including the Arts Council, on this important subject. I believe Long Beach can be an arts destination. I believe we have hundreds and hundreds of local artists here that deserve a good voice, and I plan to be an advocate for the arts in city council.
Right.
Can I just make one really quick comment?
Real quick.
I know, you're like spitfire. We have the Arts Council, let them be that task force. We don't need to create another task force. We have great people that have already been doing the work.
Okay.
And I would say we need to bring in the Arts Council, but have other people from the community be part of it as well.
Let's keep moving.
All right.
Heather Landeros. Every school day, children walk south on Coronado Crossing at Fourth to get to school at Mann. It's a frightening intersection, I witness an accident here at least once a week. Why is it that we do not have a crosswalk for safety? Eric?
Well, I definitely support putting a crosswalk in for safety. And I know by Parlo Chia on Broadway in Bluff Heights, somebody got hit by a car. And the city did put a crosswalk in with blinking lights, I'm open to looking at blinking lights as well. And I have to say, I'm interested in bringing the principal of Horace Mann to the Bluff Heights community to talk about how we can further improve this great school and work with the community.
Absolutely. I mean, I don't know why there's not one there, but we're definitely committed to ensuring safety for all of our children. I know that there are some speed bumps, so making sure also that we're slowing down cars and also providing a crosswalk would be a top priority.
It's a busy intersection, and my granddaughter happens to go to that school, so please bring that principal. Now, Ross Jordan is saying, what are the candidates' future goals for resident parking? Let's stay with you. Real quickly, what's your goal?
Yeah, no, I mean, number one is creating more parking, but number two is also educating residents on where parking is. And the way to do that is by, of course, having somebody in City Hall that is dedicated 100% to parking. And so, we need to make that a top priority.
Parking czar, huh?
Yes.
Yeah, and I definitely believe we need a parking planner position. I want to look at a multi-pronged approach to creating more parking, more hash marks to delineate parking. And in places where maybe a third hash mark can't go in, we could do a compact space. When repaving alleyways, I want to put parking spaces in alleyways as well where we can. And I'd like to have a trolley, the Long Beach trolley, go down to the beach parking lot after work hours, 5:15, 6 o'clock, 6:45, 7:30, and so forth, and drop residents off along points on Broadway. And I believe we can definitely pay for it, it'd be a very easy, workable solution that we can do.
Okay. Stay with you then. Barbie Summers asks, do you support cannabis legalization and safe access via brick-and-mortar dispensaries?
Sure. So, I am pro-safe access to medical marijuana. I certainly support the delivery systems. I'd like to take the approach of four zones within the city of Long Beach. I didn't agree with having two dispensaries per council district, because I thought that the policies of each council district was different. But I support taking the four zones approach, northeast, southwest, and having a couple dispensaries per zone. And of course, we need to make sure they are in safe areas and that they are bringing up the community by having standards for medical marijuana.
Yes. Thank you, Barbie, for that great question. Definitely in support of it. I think that the more that we can have storefronts, the more we can professionalize it, their workforce, their patients, everybody can ensure safety and that they're getting quality products. I think that Long Beach, the people that have worked on and ordinance in Long Beach, I think it's wonderful because it goes above and beyond what our governor has done. And so, I believe that in Long Beach, we can have one of the safest ordinances, should that pass in November, and hopefully it does. How we make sure that, I think the number one issue is zones, ensuring that there are enough so that there's not safety issues with having one that has too many, too much activity.
Gotcha. This is a long question, but I think it's an important one, as I'm trying to read it here on the air. It's from Long Beach Residents Empowered. It says, given that the second district is densely populated with renters, we would like to know where each of the candidates stand on affordable housing issues. Also, seeing how Long, seeing how Long Beach has no local renter protections in place, what are the candidates willing to do to support renters against retaliatory evictions or rent increases because they contact code enforcement to report habitually, habit, habitually bad issues in those homes? I know this has come up, I'm stuttering on it because I know I've been in city council meeting a couple of times when this has come up and how real it is. So, Janine, what would you say to these guys?
Yeah, I mean, I am the candidate that has a track record of standing up for renters. I will probably be a lifelong renter myself. I was on the Steering Committee for Housing in Long Beach, which helped to create a policy REAP, a rent escrow account policy, which I think has changed and will be something else by the time I get into council. But I am definitely 100% supportive of renters' rights and making sure that they have a voice, that they have a process that protects them. You know, I, on top of having a track record of doing that, I am the candidate that has the Apartment Association and those that are against some of these policies, raising a lot of money against me. And that, I think, demonstrates the fact that I will be a fighter for renters, and we have so many renters in our district, so many old buildings that really need to be maintained. But how we enrich our city programs and making sure that our city programs are safe, that we have enough staff, that we're focusing on the bad actors and not every single actor, those things are extremely important to me. But working with council members like Council Member Gonzalez, like Rex Richardson, on what experience they've already had, because there's already been a lot of work in this area for a long time. But our district is extremely important for renters on these.
Eric?
Well, we have a very high rent population here in the city of Long Beach. And when I knock on the doors, there are many residents that are concerned about rising rent prices, and I'm very cognizant of that. And, you know, I have to say that there are policies that are sometimes put in place that sort of accelerate rent increases as opposed to blocking that from happening. For instance, recently, there was a policy put forward to inspect properties per year on every property owner. And each property owner was going to be charged a fee to do that. The property owner was going to pass that fee on to the renters, because they're getting hammered as well. And so, I'm very cognizant of rent increases, and I want to look at some sort of way to stabilize rents that's pragmatic. I think it's difficult sometimes when you only work for one side and not the other. And I'm here to work for both sides. I'm here to work for renters, and I'm here to work with property owners, to come up with a real pragmatic solution to do so. And so, moving forward, I look forward to taking that challenge on as a city council member with Lena Gonzalez and with the other council members across the city. And I am backed by the Apartment Association, and a lot of the people from the Apartment Association are middle-class people that happen to own a few, maybe quadplexes and so forth, and these are people that are also making ends meet. So, we can't, we can't demonize property owners here. And certainly, we need to help our renters. So, let's work together on this solution, come up with something that's a win-win solution.
Eric, staying with you, because it looks like, I'm assuming, this is from Tom Crowe. He said, he received a mail in comparing Janine Pierce to George Wallace, why the deceptive campaigning? I don't know what either of you know about this, I haven't.
Sure.
I'm from Alabama, so I would certainly be keen on this one.
Sure. Well, I can answer the question. That was a factual mailer. My opponent was an American independent up until 2011, and that was George Wallace's party. And I certainly don't believe my opponent is racist or homophobic. But I have to say that when you're running for political office, it's a good thing to know which political party you're registering for, as opposed to the client of state. So, the mailer was factual, and that's what it was. I happen to be a lifelong Democrat.
Yeah, I was pretty surprised to see the mailer, and I was pretty surprised to see that it was paid for by Eric himself, by his campaign. I was a registered independent, and like the LA Times said in April, 73% of those that are registered as an independent believed that it meant they were independent of a party. I have worked hard for democratic values my entire life. I opposed the Iraq War, I marched in pride when I was six years old with my mom, you know, so my tracker, record is clear. But to put together a mailer that talks about homophobic, talks about racism, and puts my name on it, is misleading and deceptive. And if you're going to have a candidate that's willing to do that, it raises for me a lot of questions and concerns, whether or not I was running for this seat or not. To have a council member in office that is willing to bend the truth for those that don't know me is a big concern. And so, I registered as a Democrat, I remember the day I registered as a Democrat, I was proud. I came to Long Beach and I got involved, and I started meeting elected leaders like Tonya Reyes Yaranga, like Steve Neal, that were Democrats with integrity, that fought for working people, that fought to make sure everybody had a voice. And it was that that made me register finally as a Democrat.
Well, can I respond?
Real quickly, and then I want to go to the next question.
Sure.
Because this is a sensitive issue, I know you should.
Sure. Well, first off, the truth is, is that my opponent was not a Democrat, registered in 2011. It didn't take me years to figure out that I wanted to be a Democrat. And the truth is that my opponent's campaign has been very deceptive the entire time, at thousands and thousands of doors, telling people that I'm, I live in a swanky high-rise in downtown, and that I'm a business owner, I don't care about the community. All my work has been in the community, I'm a middle-class person. I was working the entire time during the campaign. And my opponent was saying that she was the only person who didn't take big oil money. First off, that argument is ludicrous in my mind. My opponent took oil money from workers where their PAC money goes to, that work on oil refineries, where their PAC money pays to her campaign. And the truth of the matter is that I got $250 from Single Hill Petroleum and $400 from John McEwen, and that was less than 1% of my campaign donations, okay? And, and so, to put that out there to thousands and thousands of residents, and also, I like to say that we should not be demonizing our local companies that are actually hiring people here in the city of Long Beach, so.
Okay. We've got one minute left before our break. And yes or no, or your stance, real quickly, on $15 an hour minimum wage? Janine, what's your stance?
I already stated it, that I support 15. It's a path to get there, making sure that.
Not right now?
Yeah.
I support it if our economic impact reports show at 13 or 12 that it's going in the right direction. And I certainly believe the state is going in that direction, and we should go along with the state.
Okay. We're going to take one last break, and when we return, we will ask questions from social media. Stay tuned for more of Election Perspectives.
Artful Thinking is a Long Beach-based nonprofit founded in 2010 to create artful events that educate the public about HIV and breast cancer while raising funds to support those services. Since then, we have brought Long Beach two successful comedy nights with Paula Poundstone and the monthly film series Out at the Movies, which featured appearances by Lily Tomlin as well as others. Beneficiaries include the Women to Woman Campaign in Long Beach, the Christina Applegate Foundation, St. Mary's Hospital's Care Program, the AIDS Assistance Foundation, the AIDS Food Store. Contact us at info@artefalthinking.org. Thank you.
My name is Tariq Shakur. I'm youth organizer with Youth Justice Coalition. Our 1% campaign focuses on taking 1% of the budget used for LAPD, LA City Attorney, sheriffs, county, and probation. This equals to $100 million a year. That's enough to fund 25,000 youth jobs, fit the youth centers, and 500 peace boarders in schools and on the street, therefore decreasing the school-to-prison pipeline and mass incarceration of people calling in general. Visit youthforjustice.org to learn more about the campaign and get involved.
I'm Derek J. Simpson, Executive Director of the Long Beach Community Action Partnership. And we've been speaking with the two candidates running for a city council District Two, Eric Gray and Janine Pierce. We've also been asking questions of you and taking them from social media to ask of our candidates here. And we want to go thou to our next media question, which was asked in a different way, but it was regarding your working relationship with the council and with the mayor. What should we expect in that regard from you, Eric, and then you, Janine?
Sure. Well, I have a great relationship with Mayor Robert Garcia. We worked a lot together in the downtown community, we helped to pass the Downtown Plan. I worked with him with the Historic Pine Avenue Business Association, HOPA. We have a tremendous working relationship, and I helped him with the Harvey Milk Park to get all six neighborhood associations approved for the Harvey Milk Park in downtown. Robert and I are very similar in a lot of ways, we're both visionaries, we both care deeply about our community, we both want to balance business and other types of groups out there. And I'm looking forward to working with Robert, it's going to be a great time.
And Janine, with the mayor and with the council?
Yeah, I have a longstanding relationship with a lot of the council members and the mayor as well. I worked closely on, you know, many of their campaigns, but also on a lot of policies that we've worked on in the city, hashing out negotiations in between, you know, business and labor and the environment. I worked closely with Mayor Garcia when he was on the Coastal Commission, whenever we were working against a project on Ocean Boulevard. I've worked closely with him since he's become mayor, and I was on his transition team. And so, you know, I have a great relationship with them, and I look forward to leading both as a visionary and policy and doing community work together.
Now, you both have talked about relationships within the community, and we've really focused on community, but you've also both talked about your relationships with businesses. Now, I know that there's the business side, and I've been involved on that side of the equation. And there's also the employee side, where you're looking for a good livable wage job in our community. But what should we expect from you both? If I'm a small business person, what should I expect from you in terms of policy going forward, Eric?
Sure. What to expect from me as someone who understands business, understands that policies put in place are, really affect our business. I'm here to cut the red tape. If you want to build out a patio, I'm here to help. If you want to do an event, I'm here to help. I'm here to support you, I'm here to bring in more businesses to create foot traffic and increase the vibrancy of the city of Long Beach. I co-founded the Historic Pine Avenue Business Association, I volunteered with the On Broadway Business Association, and I know what makes business corridors tick. And I believe that the second district has an incredible business community that needs help. I want to work with the Four Street Retro Row Bid, they've been working on a shoestring budget, and they've been doing an incredible job. But I want to help them with their visions, and I have my own visions to bring to them as well. I want to help create a business improvement district for the Broadway Quarter, and include Bixby Park, include a clean and safe team so that our parks are clean, that our business quarters are cleaned up. You're going to find someone that's going to fight for business and also work with labor, of course, in the community.
Janine?
Yeah, I mean, small businesses are the heart of, especially the second district, when you think about all the business corridors. Small businesses are also one of our number one employers outside of the port. And so, it's definitely something that we want to see continue to thrive, which is why I support a path to 15. One of the first things I did when I decided to run was go out and talk to small business owners, because it was one of the areas that fascinated me after Measure N, because we did so much community outreach with those businesses. And everything from, you know, improving open counter to working with our Economic Development Commission, to make sure that we not only are cutting red tape, but that we are working with our permits to make sure there's transparency, making sure they're cost-effective for these business owners. So many business owners put their life savings into opening a storefront and struggle so much to keep them open. much to keep them open. And so I want to make sure that we have a pathway to support small businesses, to make sure that more are coming to our city. And to work with, you know, areas like the Pike, you know, where we have great foot traffic now, we've got great big businesses that are there. But how are we ensuring that the culture and the small businesses that help Long Beach have identity are also existing in those tourism areas? And so I want to make sure that we create some policy that helps bring those businesses like Portfolio or Long Beach Creamery to places like that.
Let's pull back now to the 2nd District real quickly, because you are going to have votes on issues that transcend that district throughout the city. One big issue is the International Terminal at our airport locally. The other big issue that's getting a lot of attention is Measure A. We're in our last part of the program, and I want to give you time for closing comments. So real quickly on both issues, both Measure A and the International Terminal, in a few words.
Yeah, Measure A I'm extremely supportive of. We've got a great vision for what we want to do in the 2nd District. We cannot do that if Measure A doesn't pass. We are sitting on the edge of greatness, and we need to make sure that our infrastructure is strong, that our firefighters have what they need to do their job, and that our police have what they need. My one thing that I always say when I talk about supporting A is that while I believe we need to have enough police officers to do their job, we need to make sure that we're investing some of that money in community partnering, that we're investing that money in training, that we're talking about governing for equity, and that includes how police have a relationship with our community. And there is no time like now to have that conversation.
And the International Terminal?
And the International Terminal, you know, I'm very thankful that we have an airport in the city, and I would love to see that airport continue to thrive. We want to make sure it's successful. But we also want to make sure that it doesn't go over the noise buckets, which I don't believe that it will. But whatever we can do to put in some checkmarks to make sure that that doesn't happen is important to me. And thinking about how we green the airport is also important. So as we grow, making sure that we have those things in place.
Thank you. Eric?
So I do support the International Customs Facility, provided that the noise bucket isn't in any way abolished. You want to make sure that the residents who live in the 4th, 6th, 7th, and 8th districts are being taken care of. But we are the international city, and the 2nd District has the highest amount of tourism in the city, so certainly I support that. We help to get live music at the Long Beach Airport to bring residents in. And I think that's definitely part of our economic development, is to elevate music in the city of Long Beach. When it comes to Measures A and B, I do support Measures A and B. We do need more police officers, and we do need more firefighters as well. And our alleyways and our streets are crumbling. And, you know, we looked at other ways to raise revenues in the past. Measure I was put through by former Mayor Bob Foster, and it passed by 53%, but needed 2/3 vote to get to the full amount. And basically, at this point in time, because of rising rents, I would not support another property tax, because I don't want to see that pass on to tenants. We also cut the utilities users tax years ago, so the voters already voted on that. I think A and B will be paid for by residents, but also people coming in as well. And I think we're gonna see a lot more upside than downside with Measures A and B, so I certainly support it.
Let me ask you, because one thing that's arising now is that people are saying, oh, they say it's gonna go over here, but it's actually gonna be put someplace else. So for those who are concerned about that, to you both, how do we ensure as citizens that the money's gonna go where the politicians are saying it's gonna go?
Sure. Well, that's a really, that's an important question. And to your point, in order for it to go directly to police, fire, and infrastructure, it has to be 2/3 vote. And I don't, and I believe that it's gonna get close to that, but may not get to 2/3. And I will stick my neck out to ensure that it goes to police, fire, and infrastructure.
So we're relying on the integrity of the council as a whole, then?
That's what we're doing. And, you know, it's supposed to generate 48 million for the first six years per year, and then 24 million for the remaining four years. I would basically have the 0.5% go towards police and fire the full 10 years, and the other 0.5% in the first six years be front-loaded to infrastructure.
We only have five minutes. What would you say?
Yeah, I would say that our mayor and our council are already doing their best to make sure there's transparency and accountability. They've already put together a plan for the infrastructure, which is 90% of what that money would be spent on, they're proposing. And so I would continue with that transparent process. And, you know, it is, I get that that's troubling for folks, but it is what we absolutely need to have done to make sure that we put our city back to work and that we're addressing infrastructure.
I have 100 questions, but I have four minutes. So what I want to do is ask you to clarify anything that's been said in these last minutes that we've been together, in a minute each. And then we're gonna go into your closing comments. What do you want to clarify that we've discussed, or we go back to and make sure people understand clearly what you're talking about?
Yes, I want to clarify, when we talked about the mail piece, and it went back to misleading voters, I have no control about what people say on the door. I think that I have never supported any lies. I've never supported any misgivings. I have run a campaign of integrity, of, you know, a grassroots campaign. And the fact that someone would pay for mailers that mislead is a challenge for me. When it comes to oil money, I've taken money, yes, from a PAC, a union PAC. That workforce, there are three workers, to my knowledge, that work on those oil fields. But it's about representing workers to ensure that they have a voice on the job. And so I have not taken direct oil money. You can, you know, slice that up however you want. I have met with oil companies and said, I believe you are a leader in making sure that we get off oil. And so I continue to meet with them. I have great relationships with them, but I have decided not to take those funds, because I do not want to get pushed to do more drilling when I don't believe in it.
I want to give you a chance to, any clarifications, anything we need to go?
Sure. Well, you know, my opponent has put out things in the past accusing me of lying about, there was a, on April Fool's Day, there was a fake Daryl Supinor tweet that said that he endorsed me, and I reached out to him right afterwards, and he said it wasn't him, and I thought nothing of it. My opponent's campaign basically tweeted out or sent an email out saying that Gray lies again, and I found it to be very disheartening. I overheard a walker from my opponent's camp basically talking about the oil money and so forth. And my residents have heard the lies that were being told at the doors. So to say that my opponent's campaign has been positive couldn't be further from the truth. So I personally, we've been running a good campaign, and I look forward to further running a good campaign and educating the voters on the truth.
30 seconds each. What do you want the voters to know going into this election, June 7?
Yeah, I want the voters to know that their vote matters, that 16% wasn't enough, that we need more people to get out and vote, no matter who you vote for, that their voice has to be heard. I'm committed to running a campaign about the issues, about parking, about infrastructure, about cleaning up our environment, and that's what I'm gonna focus my energy on. And I can only do that with residents by my side to do that.
Well, I look forward to serving on the City Council. We have a great city of Long Beach. I love the city. I've been involved with the community shaping policy at the neighborhood level, and I'm so excited about going into this position to really enhance our city, preserve our historic architecture, find parking solutions, help with economic development, bring in jobs for everyone here in the city. And I look forward to your vote. I'm here for any questions. Please go to www.ericgray.com/platform. I have an extensive platform on my website, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have. And thank you for having us.
It's my pleasure. I wish you both great success going into the election and beyond. We've come to the end of our show. Thank you to our guests and our City Council District 2 candidates, Eric Gray and Janine Pierce, for joining us in our studio. And thank you to everyone who posted questions, all of which I wasn't able to ask, but on our Facebook event page, it was just a special touch to the program today. We were not able to ask all of the questions, as I said, but we are encouraging you to, encouraging the candidates, rather, to respond on the Facebook page. We encourage you to remember to vote in the city elections on June 7.